I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. If I could ask all of my council members to please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on August 10th, 2021, and of a regular meeting on August 10th, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to let council know that there was an error that was in the minutes that I called Ms. White, and she corrected it. And since it had already been printed out publicly, I just wanted to make sure that if anyone received that, particularly the vote on the collective bargaining issue, that that was a no vote by myself, and I believe Councilman Moody as well. And so the minutes have been corrected to reflect that.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. They've been corrected online and in councils' packages.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Madam Clerk. All being corrected, if we are in need of a motion in a second?
Move for approval.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the item on our agenda of public hearing, item 21-257. And Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the proposed adoption by the City Council of a resolution to request the General Assembly to amend the present city charter. The proposed amendment to the charter will revise Charter Section 12.09, Recall of Elected Officers.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
For this public hearing?
Yes, sir, there are. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Portsmouth, Virginia, in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-257 is a public hearing to obtain the residence approval to ask the General Assembly to amend the city charter relating to Section 12.09, which is the standard to recall an elected official. And subsections A through G informs the people how to go about having an elected official recalled. And subsection B is the main requirement for a recall. The requirement is that there must be at least 30% of the qualified voters of the city who voted for the governor in the last election for a recall to be official. Here are some questions I would like answers to. Why is this item on the agenda? How do you want this agenda item amended? The people recommend a decrease of a percentage from 30% to 10% of voters. Do the elector realize he or she is trying to deny the people their right to self-govern and hold the elected accountable for his or her misconduct? Lastly, our Bill of Rights in the Virginia Constitution says, in Article 1, quote, "A declaration of rights made by the good people of Virginia and the exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them and their posterity as the basis and foundation of government," end of quote. Section 1, Equality and Rights of Men, that all men are by nature equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights of which, when they enter into a state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive their posterity, namely the enjoyment of life and liberty, with the means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. Section 2, People, the Source of Power, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that executive officers are the people's trustee and servant, and at all times capable of correction by them. Section 3, Government Instituted for Common Benefit, that government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community, of all the various modes and forms of government that is best, which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety and is most effectually secured against the dangers of maladministration. And whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community has an unquestionable right to reform, alter, or abolish this government in such manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public prosperity. What this City Council is trying to do is deny the people his or her right to self-govern. The elected officials are planning to break the law and not be held accountable. This agenda item is an example of someone who has been elected wanting to get by with his or her abuse of his or her public office by not being held accountable for wrongdoing or misconduct.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, could you call our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Jason Ward.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Ward. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you for having me, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Ward. I live in Simon's Dell. Lived here pretty much my whole life. I just want to say I strongly oppose any changes to the city charter unless it's to make it easier to recall an elected official. I can tell you from experience, and I know several people that have worked on different recalls throughout the years, and it's not an easy task. As a matter of fact, it's extremely difficult. For that reason, I oppose any of these proposed changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. So as I said two months ago, when you were considering another charter change, I believe that this rightly should be a referendum rather than a public hearing. I believe that all of you have a conflict of interest in voting on this matter because the effect of this item as proposed will be to make it more difficult to recall an elected official. And I don't believe that that's what's necessary. If you were going to reform this item, I think that you would do so by putting in certain provisions that limited the time available for collecting signatures so that the time to unelect somebody would be the same amount of time as to elect somebody. That is to say, when somebody seeks to run for office, they have from the 1st of January of the election year until the second week in June to collect enough signatures to get their name on the ballot. Similarly, to unelect somebody, you should have a comparable period of time to collect signatures to hold an election, to remove somebody from the ballot. The other item of reform that I would want to see, if you were doing this the right way, would be that somebody who has been removed as the result of a recall process could not run for the same office again without obtaining the same number of signatures to get on the ballot as it took to have a recall election. That's one of the problems we experienced in Portsmouth. That's one of the reasons we had two recalls of one person. It only took 125 signatures once the recall timeout period was over to get back on. That shouldn't be. If you're recalled from a position, that should be it. Thank you for your past service, but don't come back. Lastly, I want to say that the judicial process that you have prescribed for reviewing the signatures that have to be laboriously obtained to get the recall going is Byzantine. There are so many opportunities in that review process for all the work of collecting the signatures to be invalidated. That's totally wrong. So because this does not really rationalize the process, because this actually makes it safer for you to be in your seats and to misrepresent the people you were supposed to be representing, I ask that you defeat this measure. And assuming that this goes as the last item did, and you all accept it, I will be making this pitch to the members of the General Assembly, who will have to approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Yes, sir. There's one additional, Ms. Erica Nessler.
Good evening, Ms. Nessler.
Good evening.
You have five minutes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. City Council members, I have reviewed the public notice.
Ms. Nessler, could you adjust your microphone?
Please, yes. Adjust your microphone, please. Thank you. No, you're okay.
I have reviewed your -- I'm thrown off. I have reviewed what you've put out there for amendment. If I -- I find that it is very hard for the average person to understand this, so I'm bringing it up as your general public. If I understand this correctly, the public can submit a request to remove an elected official by collecting signatures of 30% of the voters. It appears that this change will now narrow our ability by limiting us to specific mandated reasons for removal instead of the original general statement of our reason. To do this, we will be required to have a specific statement of the grounds for which to remove the official. This change would limit the public to removal of an officer only for the changes of neglecting duties, misuse of office, or incompetence. When it has a material adverse effect upon the conduct of the officer or competence -- I'm not even going to go into all that. This change -- the justice of this is, this change requires that one of the signers must petition, make an oath, on this petition, must make an oath before a proper official that states that this is true, that their statement is true. It is not clear what risks said signer will make to this oath. What would they be subjected to from such an oath? It also adds an additional requirement that the judge of the circuit court may hold a hearing and take evidence of determining sufficiency of the petition. So what's the point of getting all the voters' signatures? This notice also has a mysterious additional paragraph in that notice stating that at or following a public hearing, City Council may consider additional changes to the subsequent Section A, B, and C, including increasing the number of electoral signatures on the Doesn't make a lot of sense. This appears to me as a form of voter suppression and/or censorship. This amendment would additionally burden the public and limit their right to recall an elective official. It is so vague that I don't understand, the way it's written, what is the true percent of voters' signatures required to have a valid petition? There is no definition of how and why the circuit court is to be involved. I fear that these changes are, at best, adding additional burden on our voting public to recall an elected official, and, at worst, voter suppression. This amendment's efforts are not transparent and not for the good of the public. If I understand this proposed change correctly, I am disappointed at this proposal and concerned by the actions of our city elected officials. I'm against these changes, and I formally ask that this be voided. If you truly believe that this is necessary, you must provide clarity for the public, for our voting public, to understand, and then put it out as a referendum at an election year. Also show that this is not self-serving to protect yourselves. To show that this is not self-serving, you would put it out as a referendum at the end of your terms. I think I'm concerned. I feel like our city has a lot of issues that are far more important at this time. When you have staffing shortages, our city's reputation is in disarray. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, this is a public hearing, and so anyone that is in the audience can come forward and speak on the public hearing. Are there any other individuals in the audience who wish to come forward and speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed? From my council colleagues, is there any discussion on this public hearing? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Are you -- go ahead.
The next item on your agenda is item 21-258, the receipt of bids pursuant to an invitation for bids for a non-exclusive fiber franchise agreement. In accordance with state law, public notice was placed in the local press by the city clerk's office to accept bids for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. The agreements will have a term of seven years with two renewal terms of seven years each, and will allow for the placement of fiber facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Madam Clerk, how many bids have we received?
One bid has been received.
Please read the bid and market for identification.
Yes, sir. Dated August 30th, 2021, this bid is from Sims IS Holdings LLC. Hereby submits this proposed bid for a non-exclusive fiber franchise agreement with the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, in support of Sims IS Holdings, states as follows. One, Sims IS Holdings is a Virginia limited liability company in good standing, which plans to establish and operate a state-of-the-art data center within Portsmouth. Simis Holdings is a subsidiary of Simis, Inc., a Virginia corporation headquartered in Portsmouth, which provides information technology solutions. Two, Simis Holdings desires to place fiber cable in Portsmouth right-of-way to provide its data center with fiber optic connectivity. Therefore, Sims IS Holdings submits this bid for approval of the accompanying non-exclusive fiber franchise agreement, and will sign this franchise agreement if it is approved, and is submitted by Dr. Johnny Garcia, President.
Are there any additional bids? Yes, I'm addressing the public. Are there any additional bids? Then I declare the bidding closed. And Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing. 21-259?
Yes, sir. Adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Simis Holdings LLC for a non-exclusive fiber franchise agreement having a term of seven years with two renewal terms authorizing the placement of fiber facilities within the city's public ways.
And Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers on this public hearing?
No, sir.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? If there are no members from the public who wish to be heard, then this public hearing is closed. Is there any recommendation from city staff regarding the bid received from Simmons?
City staff recommends approval of the bid by Simis.
Thank you, City Manager. Members of City Council, is there any additional discussion about this item? Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to make sure it is clear. You said, Madam Clerk, this was advertised in the local press and also in the city clerk's office?
Yes, sir, it was.
How many days it was advertised?
The ad was placed 30 days prior, and it was also, it was advertised twice. It was advertised 30 days prior and then two weeks prior.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. We are needing a motion in a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 21-260, Public Hearing on Rezoning and Use Permit Applications, item A, Z-21-04. And Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item and ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. Rolandwood Ordnance granting the request of Hoggett &amp; Your Associates PC on behalf of Albert Dale to subdivide the rear portion of his property at 1 Mohawk Drive and to rezone it from multifamily urban residential to general mixed use. Upon rezoning, the property will be joined to the adjacent property at 4387 Portsmouth Boulevard, which is currently zoned general mixed use. The generalized future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan indicates that the parcel to be rezoned will be joined to a parcel that is a part of the mixed-use corridor. Planning Commission recommends approval, and the actual ordinance reads zoning amendment ordinance, Z-2104.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Glover, members of Portsmouth City Council.
Sir, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. I hope we won't need them. I'm Ray Fadua of Office at 901 Portsona Parkway, and I'm with the firm of Hoggett &amp; Your Associates. We are here tonight asking for the rezoning of this property as described and to be in conformance with the remaining residential properties fronting on Rolandwood Mohawk Drive out in Rolandwood subdivision. And the rear of the property has basically been used for industrial, commercial, or whatever through the years that Dale's Hardware was involved in running the store there. And as you know, because of the big boxes now gobbling up the local people who have made their business and their money in Portsmouth for all these years, Mr. Dale, and his age, which he just turned 96, has had to retool. Fortunately, this decks and docks, which seems to be a growing industry here for Portsmouth and Tidewater area, and only one of the kind, is interested, as you can see, in picking up this rear portion of the residential lot, and it will entail the other additional lots along Mohawk Drive conforming to residential use. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. We had favorable vote from Planning Commission, and thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, sir. We do have one registered speaker on this item, and that is Ms. Donna Si, ma'am. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive, District 5, Churchland. So Mr. Gale wants to subdivide the rear portion of his property at 1 Mohawk Drive and join the property with 4387 Portsmouth Boulevard and rezone 1 Mohawk Drive to be used as a mixed-use property. This property is located in Voting Precinct 31 in District 4, Hodges Manor section of the city. Voting takes place at the West Park Church of Christ. The representative for this District 4 is Councilman Bill Moody. He needed to have had a called meeting at this church for the voters to have an opportunity to share his or her thoughts on this agenda item before it has come to the City Council for a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. If there's anyone else in the audience that didn't have an opportunity to register for this specific public hearing, you may come forward and provide your name and address, and you will have five minutes. Is there anyone who? Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. Members of City Council, is there any discussion about this item? Seeing none, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to item B, U P dash twenty-one dash twelve. And Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item and ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. Prentice Park, resolution granting the request of Wynn Property Management for use permit at two thousand one Azalea Avenue to develop a two-story dwelling. The property is approximately point one seven acres in size and is zoned urban residential. The generalized future land use map of the Bill One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends high-density, single-family residential development. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution is a resolution granting a use permit, U P twenty-one twelve, to Wynn Property Management and Real Estate Development Limited to develop a two-story dwelling at two thousand one Azalea Avenue, tax parcel zero one two one dash zero zero five oh.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Good evening, ma'am. If you would please state your name.
Valencia Kelly. I'm a representative of Wynn Property Management.
Thank you, ma'am, and you have ten minutes.
Okay, thank you. First, good evening, Mayor, and Congressmen and Councilmen and women.
They've been promoted, right? Thank you.
Okay, what we propose to do is demolish this single-family home and replace it with two-
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you adjust your microphone, please? Thank you.
Is that better? Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Replace it with two townhouses, and that's about it. Any questions? Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Does Wynn Property Management manage anything else in Portsmouth?
Yes, we do. Some rentals, several rentals, and a couple of new constructions.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. And we, we do have a registered speaker, so once you sit down, we'll bring up the registered speaker. Thank you. And our registered speaker for this item is Ms. Donna Si.
I'm making up a long time.
Thank you, ma'am.
This property, oh, wait a minute. My name is Donna Si, and I live three one oh four Garland Drive, District Five, Churchland. This property is located in Voting Precinct Fourteen in District Two, Craddock section in the city. There is a Brighton Prentice Park Civic League. The representative of this District Two is Councilman Chris Woodard. He needed to work, he needed to have worked with the president of the Civic League to have had a call meeting at this Civic League's meeting place for the voters to have an opportunity to share his or her thoughts on this agenda item before it has come to the City Council for a public hearing.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone in the audience that not, who did not have the opportunity to register to speak on this specific public hearing and wish to come forward now? If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
My name is Jason Ward, I live in Simmsdale. Uh, could, could we go back to the existing structure, please? So they want to tear that single-family house down and build, this is in Craddock, am I, did I catch that?
It's, I believe it's in Prentice Park, sir. Prentice Park, sir.
Okay. And could we go back to what they're wanting to build? So, what is the, let's see, proposed building area, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four square feet, is that the, that's the size of the structure that they're wanting to build? Is that right?
Sir, that's, that's the dimensions up there. We're not, we're not the technical people, sir. You have five minutes, sir.
Yeah, that, that means I got four oh four left.
Okay.
But thank you for pointing that out. And what is the size of the existing structure, if I might ask?
Mr. Baldwin, sir? Can you help with this?
Um, yes, sir. As is noted in the staff report, the existing structure is twelve hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Okay. I would oppose this. I'm seeing a lot of this going on in the city, and I don't like it at all, and I know a lot of other people don't like it at all, especially the people that live in these neighborhoods, seeing these, um, these houses being torn down and much bigger houses being built in the spaces. So, I would oppose this. That's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who did not get an opportunity to sign up for this particular item who wish to come forward? Seeing none, then this public hearing is now closed. Members of council, is there any discussion on this item? Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question to Deputy City Manager Baldwin. I was, had a conflict on the day that the Planning Commission had this meeting, so were there any conflicts with any of the Civic Leagues and the conditions that are within? Could you update the public on what those conditions of the approval for the Planning Commission were?
Okay, first, to answer your question, as we, I mentioned this at a prior council meeting, unbeknownst to staff, when we went to the Planning Commission meeting, there have been two emails sent to the Planning Department in opposition. Those were included in your packet tonight. Those did not make it to the Planning Commissioners, and those were the only items we had as far as opposition to that, to that matter at the Planning Commission meeting. As far as conditions, let me look those up quickly here. Put my glasses on. Our item here. Get to the correct application. Okay. There are three proposed conditions with this use permit. Number one, that the plan be in substantial compliance with the site plan, which you've seen in your packet. Number two, that it be constructed in compliance with all applicable codes, ordinances, and regulations. It's a standard condition. And the third one, that all taxes and fees associated with property be paid when due.
Thank you, sir. We are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
And that concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda. We've now come to City Manager's report, item twenty-one dash two-six-one. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY twenty-twenty-two Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Are there any registered speakers? Yes, there is. We do have one, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Donna Si, and I live at three one oh four Garland Drive in District Five, Churchland. I just want y'all to know that all y'all have a notebook in your file box. The budget book, to me, is the bible for this City Council, which they aren't reading. So I'll tell you about twenty-one dash two-six-one, a grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for fourteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars will be put into, for the year twenty-twenty-two Grants Fund to operate local probation and pretrial services. Where is the income and expense statement from the Sheriff's Office for probation and pretrial services to demonstrate how this money will be spent? Pretrial services are responsible for providing a supervised release alternative for nonviolent offenders. The New Year starts July one, twenty-twenty-one, and ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. In the budget book, it has listed outcomes and accomplishment. It doesn't report any probation or pretrial outcome or accomplishment on page one twenty-nine in the budget book. Also in the budget book, there's a list of departments. There's no probation and pretrial departments listed. So how is fourteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars going to be used? We, the people, need to know how the people's money is being spent and where it is being spent, and why isn't this information in the budget book for us, the self-governing folks in this city?
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We now come to item twenty-one dash two-six-two. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY twenty-twenty-two Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do, um, council members, we need a, need a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Donna Si, I'm Donna Si. I live at three one oh four Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District Five, Churchland. Twenty-one dash two-six-two, a grant from the Virginia Department of Social Services for two thousand four hundred dollars will be put into the four-year twenty-twenty-two Grants Fund for the Department of Social Service for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program. Where is the income and expense statement for the Department of Social Service for the Family Membership Incentive Program to demonstrate how this money will be spent? Look at page one sixty-three in the budget book to identify that there is no notation for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program and their services provided list. The Department of Social Service also has a list of goals along with services provided. The str, the strategic goals are not incorporated with the services in the Department of Social Services. Where is the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program? What does it do, and who manages this program?
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion from, from, from any of you? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Item twenty-one dash two-six-three. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a flood mitigation assistance grant in the amount of seven million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and appropriating said funds in the stormwater category of the FY twenty-twenty-two Capital Improvement Fund budget to provide funding for the Old Town Storm Water Pump Station.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live at three one oh four Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District Five, Churchland. Twenty-one dash two-six-three, a grant from the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program from the Federal Emergency Management Management Agency for seven million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and put into the stormwater category for the year twenty-twenty-two Capital Improvement Fund budget to pay for the Old Town Storm Water Pump Station. Where is the income and expense statement from the stormwater category of the Public Works Department to pay for the Old Town Storm Water Pump Station to demonstrate how this money will be spent? Remember when I sent out an email on August the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one regarding the flooding in Sterling Point? Mayor Glover responded. Then, the Virginia Coastal Resiliency Master Plan met on Thursday, September the second, twenty-twenty-one, at Tidewater Community College. The flyer they sent out asked these questions. Are you worried about flooding? Have you experienced flooding in your community? We want to hear from you. Now, instead of fixing the stormwater issues throughout the city, here is an agenda item to pay for the Old Town Storm Water Pump Station for seven million eight hundred, I mean, seven million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Remember how the people are taxed for stormwater on his or her real estate tax yearly? The flooding is not being addressed in the city. How big is this pump station going to be to use up seven million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? How many gallons of water is this station going to pump? Is this for a new development? Where is this pump station going to be built? And where is this pump station going to be installed? Where is the architectural plan? Were the Civic Leagues of District One notified to have a call meeting to learn the details of this pump station and obtain his or her feedback? If not, why not? Since we, the people, are to self-govern. What page is this water pump addressed in the Capital Improvement Plan? The city has increased the stormwater feed to seventy-five cents per E R U per month for the V S M P permit for sea level rise. The city is not compliant with V S M P permit with all this flooding in the city. Public Works Storm Water Management Fund is in the budget book on page one forty-one. Description of service provided and goals are not being followed, and no one is holding anyone accountable for not following through with his or her job description. Storm Water Utility Fund is managed by both Public Works for the Operations Unit and Engineering for the Regulatory Compliance Unit. Public Works and Engineer have a set of goals, but these goals have not been accomplished yet. The city is going to get seven million four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to pay for an Old Town Storm Water Pump Station without the residents' knowledge or consent. The continuous flooding throughout the city isn't being addressed, and Public Works and Engineering are getting by with not correcting the flooding.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from our council members? Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. I just want to, this question addressed to the City Manager. Um, I-
Um, I know we had, uh, discussions about eight pumps that possibly will be, uh, addressed with the opera money, with, eight opera money, we're not, um, would this be, um, addressing at least one of those pumps, um, it would not be?
This is separate and apart from that. Let me just point out that we aggressively go after funding to address our needs in the city, and this is, um, a success story in that we're getting additional funds based on the requirements that were set for these grants. We're getting those additional funds to address some of the needs.
So, this, this is not going to be for those eight pumps, it's not going to address those, those issues?
No, this is separate and apart from those.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-264. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance to amend Article 1 of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending subsection 17-2A for the purpose of conforming technology to the Uniform Statewide Building Code.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we're in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-264 is amending the Article 1 of Chapter 17 of the Code of Portsmouth, subsection 17-2A, to conform the terminology to the Uniform Statewide Building Code. Where is Portsmouth Code and where is the statewide building code? I wrote Mr. Smith for the information, and he sent me a website that had a list of building codes that did not specifically address the Article 1 of Chapter 17, subsection 17-2A. The website page had many different codes, so I couldn't understand which code to look up. And then I wrote Mr. Baldwin for help, and he didn't even respond. So, the cities elected are going to vote on something sight unseen, just wondering how business is conducted in this city.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from the members of council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-265. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $167,818.18 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services to improve equipment.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a registered speaker, and that is Ms. Donna Si. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-265 is a municipal regulation grant from the Assistant to Firefighters Program from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for $167,818.18, and this money will go into the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the year 2022 to improve, improve the equipment. Where is the list of equipment needed and the amount of money the equipment will cost recorded? Other expenses are recorded in the budget book on page 294, such as the Effingham Fire Station repairs for $250,000. On page 305 in the budget book, there is a report on the cost of building a new fire station for $6 million in a central location in the Craddock District. How are projects being prioritized in this city? How come the city is spending all of the taxpayers' money without our consent? How much did the fire station location study cost? Why was the study done? Did the Craddock District 2 Civic League give its consent about the study? On page 308 in the budget book, reports spending $2.8 million for an analysis, planning, and engineering associated with existing and future public safety facilities. In the budget book on page 309, it reads that there is a public safety new radio system for $12.8 million because of new communication standards, which they were here in Portsmouth. The mentality in Portsmouth is to spend the people's money without his or her consent. Yes, keep the people in poverty, so the government will continue to make decisions for the people.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-266. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we're considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting federal asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $4,823.15 received from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture Fund for use by the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ma'am. We need a motion of a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
And we have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-266 is an ordinance accepting federal asset forfeiture funds from the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration for $4,823.15, and giving the funds for the year 2022 to the Sheriff's Asset Forfeiture Fund for the Sheriff's Office. Where is the income and expense statement from the Sheriff's Office for the Asset Forfeiture Fund to demonstrate how this money will be spent? On page 128 in the budget book, the expenditure categories are salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges. Total expenditure budget for the Sheriff's Department is $13,354,877. The funding source is the General Fund. So, how is this $4,823.15 going to be spent?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from the members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-267. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance to appropriate $105,689.97 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 2022 General Fund operating budget for use by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-267 is an ordinance, ordinance accepting from the telephone commission revenue of $105,689.97 to be used in the four-year 2022 General Fund operating budget for use by the Sheriff's Office. What telephone company has this commission revenue? Show the people how the money will be used in the Sheriff's Budget for the year 2022. On page 128 in the budget book, the expenditure categories are salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges. Total expenditure budget for the Sheriff's Department is $13,354,877. Is this $105,689.97 going to be used to make up a part of this $13,354,877? Just want to see how the accounting will be done for this money.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion among our members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-268. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance that is pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance to accept $25,856.06 received via the Circuit and General District Courts and to appropriate said amounts in the FY 2022 General Fund budget for use by the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office to support the Training Academy.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-268 is an ordinance accepting the Circuit and General District Courts appropriation of $25,856.06 to the, for the year 2022 General Fund budget to support the Sheriff's Training Academy. Where is the income and expense statement from the Sheriff's Office for the Sheriff's Training Academy to demonstrate how this money will be spent? How come the Sheriff's Training Academy doesn't have its own financial statement? Does the Circuit and General District Courts support the Sheriff's Training Academy as a part of the academy's financial structure? How much of the General Fund's money goes to the Sheriff's Training Academy? How come there is no separate financial statement for the Training Academy? We, the people, need to see exactly where every penny is spent in this city.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion amongst the members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-269. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $33,436 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence.
Thank you, ma'am. We're in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-269 is the United States Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office of $33,436 for the year 2022 Grants Fund for the Police Department to deter driving under the influence. Where is the income and expense statement from the Police Department to demonstrate how this money will be spent? Description of services provided includes a response unit, security unit, animal control unit, and expenditures include salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, which equals $32, $33,299,326. The funding comes from the General Fund. There is a response unit for traffic safety, but there is no category specifically, specifically for the DUI for the people to know how the money is to be used, is their reason why.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from our members on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-270. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $6,958 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to increase usage of occupant restraints and vehicles.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a speaker for this item, and it is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-270 is an ordinance allowing the federal government, U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic, Traffic Safety Administration, pass through the state of Virginia Highway Safety Office of $6,958 for the year 2022 Grants Fund for the Police Department to increase usage of occupant restraints and vehicles. Where is the income and expense statement from the Police Department to demonstrate how this money will be spent? There is a response unit for traffic safety, but there is no category specifically for the restraints and vehicles for the people to know how the money is to be used.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from the members on council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Item 21-271. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we're considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $22,319 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2022 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter speeding.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood in District 5, Churchland. 21-271 is an ordinance from the federal government, the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, passing through the Virginia Highway Safety Office of $22,319 to the, for the year 2022 Grants Fund for the Police Department to deter speeding. Where is the income and expense statement from the Police Department to demonstrate how this money will be spent? There is a response unit for traffic safety. There is a response unit for traffic safety, but there is no category specifically for the department to deter speeding for the people to know how the money is to be used.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from members of council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-two. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting system transformation excellence and performance funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for Step VA outpatient children's services.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
And we do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood and District 5, Cherslin. Twenty-one dash two-seven-two is an ordinance allowing the system transformation excellence and performance funding for Step Virginia from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars for the year 2022 for the Step Virginia outpatient children's services in Portsmouth. Where is the income and expense statement from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to demonstrate how this money will be spent? Why is this money needed? This four hundred and fifty-four thousand and six hundred and sixty-three dollars is a lot of money. We, the people, need to know how this money will be spent for the health care of all the people in Portsmouth. Step Virginia is for all ages, not just for children. To reform the behavioral health care system, Step Virginia was created. Of course, the state has to create an innovative initiative for individuals with behavioral health disorders to make a uniform set of required services, consistent quality measures, and improve oversight in all Virginia communities. And also, Step Virginia is based on a national best practice model that requires the development of a set array of deliberately chosen services that make up a comprehensive, accessible system for those with serious behavioral health disorders. An extensive stakeholder initiative then help define the services that are needed in Virginia. The federal and state governments can have all these standards, but not in Portsmouth. The standards actually prevent many people from getting the care he or she needs. These multiple standards create a system for people to get discouraged and not tried to improve his or her lifestyle. Yes, it is all about local government getting money and showing no proof on how our money is being spent and the transformations occurring because of the investment into the people.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from members of council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-three. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting supplemental emergency COVID-19 grant funding through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
And we do have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood and District 5, Cherslin. Twenty-one dash two-seven-three is for supplemental emergency COVID-19 grant through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for a hundred and five thousand dollars, a hundred and five thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty dollars for the year 2022 to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Where is the income and expense statement from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to demonstrate how this money will be spent? How does the Virginia VDH plan to mitigate the spread of COVID with a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars? What is happening today was foretold by founding father Benjamin Rush when he said, and I quote, "Unless we put medical freedom into the Constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to others. The Constitution of this republic should make special privileges for medical freedom as well as religious freedom." Benjamin Rush, end of quote.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion amongst council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-four. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for problem gambling prevention services.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And we do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. You have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood and District 5, Cherslin. Twenty-one dash two-seven-four is an ordinance that the city is allowing the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services give thirty-five thousand for the year 2022 to our local department for problem gambling, gambling prevention services. Where is the income and expense statement from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to demonstrate how this money will be spent? What is the plan to prevent people from gambling? How come the behavioral health workers didn't come together to oppose Portsmouth getting a gambling casino to prevent spending money on gambling? Gambling addiction is worse than cocaine addiction.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion amongst our members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-five. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this option.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting projects for assistance in transition from homeless path funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of eighteen, one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund to assist homeless residents.
We are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second. We do have a speaker for this item, and it is Ms. Donna Si. You have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Si. I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood and District 5, Cherslin. Twenty-one dash two-seven-five, this ordinance, projects for assistance in transition homeless or path, is from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for the year 2022 to assist homeless residents. Where is the income and expense statement from this, from the, our local Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to demonstrate how this money will be spent? How does our local behavioral health department plan to assist homeless residents? Where is the department's report? Where is the homeless shelter in Portsmouth to direct the homeless to? How does the local behavioral health department work with the Her Shelter, Park, Portsmouth Volunteer for the Homeless, and Portsmouth Christian Outreach Ministry?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion from our members on council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-six. And Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting substance abuse block grant funding from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and appropriating said amount in the FY 2022 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for substance abuse prevention.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
And we do have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood and District 5, Cherslin. Twenty-one dash two-seven-six, substance abuse block grant from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the year 2022 for substance abuse prevention. Where is the income and expense statement from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Service to demonstrate how this money will be spent? How is the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health preventing drug abuse? Is the local behavioral health department working with their program with the sheriff's department? If not, why not?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion amongst the members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to new business, boards and commissions. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-seven. Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward for council's consideration?
Nothing to report, did it?
Thank you, sir. Item twenty-one dash two-seven-eight. Item submitted by council members, appointment of the city assessor. Council members, we are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to appoint Patrick W. Doris as city assessor with an effective date, start date of Monday, September 20th, 2021 with a salary of one hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. We are in need of a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item B. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Planning Commission by deleting Section 2-528 pertaining to compensation for planning commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion in a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Are there any registered speakers for this item?
Yes, sir. Yes. Mr. Mark Adalde Kietrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members, and other neighbors. On a personal note, during the time that you all were meeting virtually, there was no sign of my neighbor, Ms. Si, at any of those meetings. I'm glad to see that her physical and mental faculties are undiminished. With regard to the subject item, what you are proposing to do is to excise a section of city code that states that members of the planning commission are to receive no compensation for their service or words to that effect. I'm willing to go down that path with you for the sake of getting to your next item, which if this provision were not removed, would not be possible to discuss in its current form. But I would ask a question about a subsequent provision in that same part of the code. So, 2-530 states, "The members of the planning commission shall hold no office of profit under the city government." And I'm wondering whether that language would create a conflict with what you contemplate doing in the next item. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure what constitutes a profit, whether it would be providing remuneration to planning commission members under the proposal that follows, or if it means holding a regular position within city government. So I call that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And do we have any discussion from our members of council? Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
The previous speaker raises a good point. I'm not an attorney either, but we do have our city attorney here, interim city attorney. So I would ask him to speak to the gentleman's concern.
Yeah, I don't have 2-530 in front of me, but based on his description of it, I don't know if this, the stipend would be considered a profit. It's a stipend for attending meetings, not a, not an office of profit. And so, you know, I would like to research it more possibly, but stipends are allowed with some boards and not allowed with others. But I don't think that's considered an office for profit necessarily. I think it's a stipend to reimburse you for expenses of attending the meeting.
Shouldn't we know for certain before proceeding? Do a little research. I think you mentioned that.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly the safe method to go through is to take a look at it for sure. I'd be happy to do that and record back with a memo early as you would like.
Mayor, since I think it's important that we be grounded in the facts and the law, I move that we defer this item to our next. I move that we defer this item to our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready? Do we have any more discussion, or are we ready for the question? If, before we go with the question, I would say, if I may add my two cents to the discussion, anytime we seek as council members to spend the people's money, the taxpayers' money, we need to be sure of what we're entering into when we do that. Because once you make a decision, it is one that cannot be taken back. And so, in the interest of making sure that we do our due diligence as a council, we need to move forward and take the recommendation of our legal counsel and make sure we have it right. So we have a motion and a second. Are you ready for the roll? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Just for clarification, this deferral is to the next meeting? Okay. So that would be deferred until September the 28th. Okay?
Mr. Mayor. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Just want to make sure I'm clear with Attorney Stromberg. So you're going to research whether paying any compensation stipend to the planning commission would constitute a profit, therefore being in violation of 2-530?
Exactly.
Okay, I think that's fair.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is deferred until September 28th.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item C. And please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item.
A resolution authorizing and directing the payment of a stipend to the members of certain boards and commissions.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Hold on, Mr. Moody had his hand up first. So we need to go in a proper order. Mr. Moody, you had your hand up first, sir, so proceed.
Mayor, until our attorney gets back with the due diligence on the question of profit, I think it's only right that we defer this item to the same time period.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Is that a motion you're making, Mr. Moody?
Yes.
A second.
Thank you.
We have a motion that we defer the decision once the attorney reports back with the appropriate answer until the next meeting on the 28th. We have a second, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item D, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, a resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 12.09 regarding recall of elective officers.
Council members, we are in need of a motion of a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion from members of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to ask Attorney Stromberg, because of some comments that were made in the public hearing pertaining to the language that we are looking to adopt and get the General Assembly to approve, the language in the charter comes from the language from the state code?
Yes, state new language, we would be adding, tracks of state code language for a recall.
Right, so that language is bringing us to the same standard as an elected official in the General Assembly would have to follow.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. And I also want to say to some of the persons who spoke that I brought this up out of the context of the recalls that we have seen historically here in Portsmouth. Dr. Hawley twice, Mayor Kenneth Wright, and Senator Lucas. There's a common thread there that they are all African-American elected officials. That's the only time you have seen that particular section used in recent history. And I would like to say that this language brings more objectivity versus subjective language into this process, so that it's not just based on emotional and generalization, but there has to be specific criteria. Also, as far as it being something that is protecting us, the new language allows for this recall process to occur immediately, not after one year being in office. And so, just want to point that out as well.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
As far as the General Assembly, there's things in the Constitution also that dictate that, but state employees would come under this language that we've adapted, that we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other, is there any other discussion from our colleagues on council? Seeing none, then we are ready to move forward. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Council members, do you have any other items to submit at this time? Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Over the few couple of weeks where we didn't have council meetings, there was a lot of things that went on. One of those were the rededication of Manor High School, Waterview Elementary School, and Craddock Middle School. Originally, those schools were named other things. I was actually on the school board at the time when those votes were made to change. There were some great events. Manor had Missy Elliott to show up on the big screen and congratulate them on the renaming of the school. As far as Craddock Elementary, that's special to me because all my children went there. I have one that go there now. Also, we had the swearing in of our new police chief, Mr. Renato Prince. I was able to attend a grand opening for Blase Boutique, which is located on 325 High Street. And myself, the mayor, Councilman Woodard, was able to attend the Churchland Soccer League event. Me, myself, and Councilman Woodard played soccer with the kids. He actually almost fell out, so he needed to get in the gym with me. But on to some more serious issues. I wanted, I was listening to the school board meeting the other day, and they were talking about the $5.1 million for risk management. I wanted to know, did we appropriate that back to them?
We just received the request, and it will be coming forward in an upcoming council meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that with this council that we have, we are definitely considering doing that because they really talked in depth about that, and it's really something that can be beneficial to the school system, especially with what it's meant for and what we have going on in the world as far as the pandemic. Also, I wanted to address, I was able to speak to some members of boards and commissions. Myself and Councilman Woodaker appoint those boards and commission, and they've been talking about how staff is discouraging them from asking questions. I think that it's important that we don't discourage our volunteers from asking questions because, to be honest with you, some of them are asking better questions than the people that we have in the positions that's getting paid. I think that has become a major issue, and I've heard, I've heard from them more than one time regarding this issue. So including even some high-ranking officials that's sitting on the d's with us right now. So I want it to be, I want our citizens to be able to ask questions and feel comfortable with asking those questions in boards and commissions. And just because we may not like the question, or they're asking more questions than we consider to be good, or that they should ask, I don't think it's a good idea for them to be discouraged or be told that they shouldn't be asking those questions. And for me, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other items that need to be submitted by council members? Councilmember Woodard, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I got a question for our city manager. What's the procedure for us to take care of any maintenance staff that may take care of Crystal Lake? I had a couple seniors come to me and say they're having problems with the foliage that's just been, you know, coming on their yards, and they're trying to see exactly what they need to do to get some help from the city. And it's something they said they tried to work out with their civic league and also the city at one point. So I'm just bringing it to council to see what we can do to help them because, you know, they're elderly people, and it's, you know, it's a concern for myself to make sure that they get the help they need. Do we have anything in motion or any personnel that can go out and help?
I will look into it.
Okay. And also, it's been a concern from citizens about speeding in their neighborhoods. You know, they've been requesting speed bumps. You know, we've been having incidents, car incidents of drive-bys and violence that's been going on, and, you know, these citizens are asking for speed bumps, preferably on Bagley Street, if you're familiar with the Harley-Davidson area. People kind of veer off and cut through trucks, and it's a lot of kids that play in that area. So some of the residents out there have asked me to see what we can do about putting speed bumps over there. Also, on Queen Street as well, I think we have a lot of new homes and new people that moved into this area, and, you know, they're experiencing a lot of high traffic and speeding over there as well with their kids. So I think that's something that, you know, we should look into just for safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, this is for the city manager. Are you in a position to address the Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission, the one point, the $1 million that was recently granted to an organization?
No, I'm not at this point. I can provide a report back on that.
Are you familiar with it?
I am.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Battle, you have the floor, sir.
I had, I was about to sneeze. Recently, during the baseball season, Cavalier Manor Little League asked for some funding, and I chose not to come to the city. I made that possible myself. Whenever Wilson Elementary calls, they get the same thing. Or Churchland Elementary, or Charles Pete Elementary. Recently, we've started giving out food to the poor on Saturday. Mr. Ray Smith called and let me know that they were having a hard time with the transportation. They were trying to get funds for the truck to get the food weekly. So I chose not to come to the city manager. I chose not to beg other agencies. I decided to take this task on myself, and therefore I'll be doing that as well. The football camp given by Post 190 yearly thing that they do, and this is the time of year that they do it, and of course, rather than come to the city, I make those donations. I'll just stop right here and say it's truly a blessing to be able to do that, and I'll continue to make everybody aware of why I forego being a millionaire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Couple of things I had to mention, and first, we'll ask Council Moody to present, and then I will mention the two items I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as you know, last week we learned of the passing of one of our Portsmouth notables, and that, of course, was J. Robert Brunel. Mr. Brunel was not only a nationally known artist, and you see his works around town just about in every public, private building. He was extremely talented. But along with being an outstanding artist, he was also very engaged throughout our city, participated in a number of organizations. Along with that, by all accounts, he was also a very fine person that'll be missed by many. Our thoughts and prayers certainly are with his wife Betty and his family during this time of their bereavement. Mayor, I would like to propose that we take a moment of silence to remember Mr. Brunel.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilmember Battle, please, sir, you have the floor.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I did beg the city for something, and they granted it to me. I begged them for the use of the baseball field in Douglas Park, and that was for a senior baseball league. And they went through the summer with no problems, and they had tons of fun. And I just want to say thanks to the city manager for preparing that for the citizens.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the question at the last city meeting, city council meeting for the public, and because we received the information in an email and the public was not made aware of it, I do want to let them know the outcomes of the questions regarding the curfews and the state of emergency. So, and of course, for children under 18 years of age, there is a state curfew. We do have a city code for minors from 11 to 5:00 a.m. So that is something that's already in force. I know a couple speakers had come forth and asked about that question, so there is an ordinance in place, and we are under the guidance to be able to enforce that as necessary. The question also came up about a state of emergency, and the crime that we've been experiencing here in the city of Portsmouth that is occurring all across our Hampton Road City and across our nation is not deemed as a state of emergency. Regarding the Virginia State Code, prevents us from gun violence being declared as a state of emergency. So I wanted to give that update back to you because I asked the question, it was provided to council, and I just wanted you to have that information as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. And Mr. Moody, sir, Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Couple more things, Mayor. First of all, I was at the 25th anniversary of the Churchland Soccer League with my colleagues. In fact, my son played on that early on. Didn't play soccer with my colleagues, so they can take relief from that. I would have probably beat him. The other thing, and Ms. Si, to her credit, she kind of brought this to light in the couple of times that she spoke tonight, there were a lot of grants that were mentioned. And I'd like to congratulate our grants team and the city manager's grants team because I think they've done one heck of a job. And so the- I think they've done one heck of a job. And so, the public knows when, when you submit a grant, you also have, it's very stringent, it's also very competitive. Uh, you're in competition with other municipalities. It's not a sure thing that you're gonna get awarded the money. And along with the grant application, uh, they also require you to specifically say how the money is intended to be spent. And not only that, there's follow-up to make sure it's spent where you, uh, where your grant application said it was gonna be spent. So, it's not a haphazard thing that, uh, you get grant money and somebody goes off and, uh, buys something, uh, uh, instead of spending it for the intended purpose. But, uh, once again, I think our grants team did an outstanding job. I didn't add these figures up, uh, but, uh, it's a significant amount of money going to a lot of different places. And that money is, uh, is saving the taxpayers, uh, money. Uh, so, uh, congratulations, uh, grants team. Absolutely.
Um, Attorney Stromberg, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, make sure council received my memo on the Lincoln Memorial Cemetery. And I don't know if, if we have time to take that up, uh, this meeting or next meeting.
I think we should take it up next meeting because there's some more details I think that we'll probably follow.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your work on that. That's important. Couple of things I have. Um, you, you know, I'm excited because when we talk about our community working together, that's what we're all here for. And so, on August 28th, uh, we had a big community day. And when I say a big community day, we brought a lot of organizations together, nonprofit, city, private business, um, to support our children and to work to end gun violence in the city. We had backpack giveaways. We had food. The food was donated by our local businesses right here in the city of Portsmouth. And also, we had other folks that were present, like the family of Dorian Finney Smith, who is our native son, who is a NBA player and a graduate of IC Norcom High School. But the beautiful thing about that special day was, um, we not only opened our new playground area in City Park where it took place, but we had an opportunity to have many, many organizations. And I'm not gonna start naming them because if I leave somebody out, I'll be called out on that. But what I will say, that could not have been done without the collaboration, the cooperation with city government and you, each and every one of you in the community. That includes the business sector, the private sector, that includes the nonprofits, our faith-based community. And it is a example. It demonstrates an example of what we can do together when we work together. So, I want to give everybody a big shout out on that and thank you all once again. The other thing I will say is that in, in, in the spirit of that, we have a press conference that will be coming up and it, it will be titled Portsmouth Speaks. It will be Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at noon, right here in the Portsmouth City Council Chamber. Um, the purpose of this press conference will be to take a stand against crime in our city. In that press conference will be myself, our council members, our city manager, our chief of police, our fire chief, our Commonwealth attorney, Ms. Stephanie Morales, Sheriff Michael Moore, representatives from the Virginia State Police, also the FBI, perhaps the Assistant U.S. Attorney's Office, and a host of community and civic groups. We have listened to your concerns regarding this grave issue. We too are tired of crime disrupting our community and it has to stop. Be the catalyst that you wish to see for change. Stand with us because we are taking action and we need each and every one of you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Barnes. And the time it will be will be at noon. Yes, sir.
I, I didn't know about the press conference. So, I'm just being informed, just like.
It, it, it just came out. We just talked about it. We, we discussed it in our meeting that we had yesterday.
Yeah, 'cause you had said council was gonna be there. I didn't know about it.
Well, I'm informing you now, sir.
Um, so, well, thank you. Um, with that being said, um, will there be a plan coming out for what's going on in the, as far as the violence was, what's going on? Because as you know, as of yesterday, somebody was killed. Um, somebody was shot at, what was it? Couple of places la- um, First Day School, Dale's Home and Swanson Home, um, and a bunch of other shootings. So, I'm hoping that the actual plan that we have for crime is gonna come out that, out of that as well because, you know, just coming together for a press conference and say we stand against violence is not gonna stop it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
There, there's a procedure and process that should be followed. Um, each of us on council represents one voice, one vote. Um, this is not an executive mayor city. It's, it's a council manager city. And I would think before anything like that and bringing in different agencies, that we would have been made aware of that. And also, that we agree to that occurring. Because one council person just can't call a press conference and ask the community to come re- and speaking on behalf of council. And council has not directed that council member to do that.
Sir, I did, I did. Just, just so you know, I, I made an announcement and I, I, I added everybody in the announcement.
I didn't cut across you while you were talking, Mr. Mayor. And so, I would, I would think that before we step out like that, that first of all, it is a discussion amongst council. Because this sets a precedent where a council member can ask other city departments to come and speak as if they're speaking on behalf of council. And council has not directed that. And so, whether you're reading an announcement or not, that's not the point. It's the process that it went through. And it may be a noble cause, but there's a way of doing it so that it's inclusive and that we're speaking as a council and not as just individuals.
That's fair, sir. And we'll have that discussion. Thank you. We have now come to the item of non-agenda speaker. Okay. Go ahead, sir.
And, and I think Dr. Whitaker is speaking to, again, the, when he said that we're not a, a mayor form of government. You know, there's a, there's a bunch of forms of government and in this city, we have a city council, city manager form of government. So, with that being said, the mayor doesn't run the city. When it comes to things, decisions being made, that comes from the majority of council and not by the mayor. Now Richmond, places like that, they have a mayor run city. But in Portsmouth, we have a city council, city manager form of government.
Thank you, sir. We now come to the item of non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you call the first speaker, please?
Ms. Marissa Adams. Hold on, I gotta find my notes. Good evening. My name is Marissa Adams and I have been a resident of Portsmouth ever since I moved here from San Diego, California in August of 2011. Um, very shortly after I moved here, I began encountering people that would criticize me from, for being from Portsmouth. Um, the disdain the locals have, um, for Portsmouth was and still shocking at times. Um, to those who have come to know me here in Virginia, they often say she's from Portsmouth. And they say it like it's a put-down. So, I get defensive. So, I used to say, no, I'm from California. I live in Portsmouth. Um, now, I don't even find the, uh, matter to, uh, make the distinction anymore. They say she's from Portsmouth. I just smile and say, yep, that's why I'm fabulous and golden and keep it moving. Um, from Churchland to the Manor to High Street to Frederick Boulevard to Elm Street to good old Crawford Street, I am Portsmouth proud, tried and true. Um, don't plan to live anywhere else. Um, I'm here today because on Thursday, August 19th, 2021, at approximately 8:22 a.m., my eight-year-old daughter was struck by a motor vehicle as she crossed the street, um, with her dad at a stop sign on the corner of Crystal Lake Drive and Rotunda Avenue. Um, they were riding their bikes. Um, when I arrived on the scene at about 8:35, I was approached by my other two children who were crying. Um, I was approached by a handful of EMTs as well as my, um, children's former school vice principal. Um, my husband was also at the scene and he was beyond distraught. Um, the driver of the vehicle that struck my daughter was in her 80s. Um, and by all initial accounts of the accident, she came to a rolling stop at a stop sign. She did not come to a complete stop at a stop sign, which is how she was able to strike my daughter and miss my husband. Um, as things progressed and I began to express my concerns about my children's safety within the neighborhood, I was appalled by the things that I was seeing and hearing. For starters, once I finally stopped getting a runaround and being sent from one telephone number to the other down at the police department, I spoke to a lady who told me, "The traffic division has been dismantled. It would be the traffic division who would handle this. You should go down to the city and tell them how you feel about the traffic division being dismantled." I was confused. With all due respect, my daughter was struck by a vehicle crossing at a stop sign in my neighborhood. I don't care about the traffic division being dismantled. Um, when I contacted the sergeant because the initial police report had some inaccuracies, the sergeant made it a point to say my husband was uncooperative at the scene and that he has viewed body camera footage in support of that. It felt like he was being defensive and insensitive. It was unnecessary for him to keep making that instance is what I thought. Because my thought was, had I been there, would be no issue of who's uncooperative. I'd be in handcuffs in the back of a police car for the first time in my life. Um, to add insult to injury, I had a neighbor move in on the corner of Crystal Lake and Lakeview Drive. I live on Roosevelt, by the way. I live right where Crystal Lake Drive turns into Roosevelt, um, before you even hit Warfield. Um, to add insult to injury, I had a neighbor move in on the corner of Crystal Lake and Lakeview Drive and, um, right after he moved in, they put signs up that's, that indicate a truck can't park there with a hitch. He had a truck and he had his boat hitched to it. And I was like, wow, a brand-new homeowner being told he can't park his car right here on the lake or whatever the case may be. So, I said, when this happened to my daughter, I said to my neighbors, I said, "Well, maybe I need to go down to city council and talk about speed bumps or some type of signs or indicators in the neighborhood." They laughed in my face. These is people that are prominent people that I look up to in my neighborhood. I'm one of the youngest homeowners in my neighborhood. Sorry, my time is running out and my phone just, give me a second. Okay. And so, I guess the bigger question would be, why is this a city council matter? Well, the nature of the neighborhood is changing down there, around there, around Crystal Lake. And it's a mix of young and old. Um, I've watched the efforts to beautify the city. There's new signs and all that great wonderful stuff. And I just want to know, can we get some speed bumps, some more street signs? The only speed limit sign on my street is when you first turn off of Rotunda onto Crystal Lake Drive. There is no other speed limit sign. I think there's another one a little bit further down Roosevelt, once it passed Crystal Lake, but other than that, it's not. That particular intersection, people come to a rolling stop at that intersection all the time. Um, one of the benefits of being a homeowner is being able for my fam- my children in particular to be able to do things like ride bikes in their neighborhood. And the fact that this happened on my street, uh, by a member of the community who was elderly and the response that I got was just utterly ridiculous, especially for the neighborhood I live in. And I guess my time is up.
Your, your, your time is up. But did you want to finish your thought?
Yes, please. Hold on. Let me pull it back up. And so, I was just asking if we could please just get something down there. I don't think the answer is police in the neighborhood. It could be something as simple as speed bumps and more street signs. My son started middle school at Waters Middle School. My daughter has already passed on. She is now at the Manor High School. My son should be able to walk to school. He can't walk to school. It's not safe. They drive down Roosevelt and Crystal Lake Drive like it's the freeway. You might get lucky if they stop at the stop sign. And, um, we don't have any sidewalks, so it's not like it's safe, uh, once you pass Crystal Lake Drive to even walk anywhere. You gotta walk in the street. You gotta ride your bicycle in the street. When you drive down Roosevelt past Warfield, it's a whole bunch of potholes and all kinds of stuff. It's just really not safe and it's, it, it's very upsetting. My daughter was hit by a car in the neighborhood and to date, nothing has been done about it. Not from the police, not from anyone or anybody.
Well, Ms. Adams, real quick, ma'am, is your daughter okay?
Yes, she's fine. Thank God.
So, so what I would recommend at this point, and I know some of my colleagues may have some questions for you, but I would ask that you stand by and, and share the information with the city manager and we will have this matter looked into as terms of the response. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Barnes.
I just want to say that I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, that happened.
I'm glad you said that. You know why? 'Cause I said it and I took it out of my speech. I said that same corner where my daughter was hit two years ago when you was campaigning, me and my husband, it's, it's not uncommon for people to walk in the neighborhood. People come from out of the area to come and walk in the neighborhood. But you personally, on that same corner, right there in the morning when I was taking a morning walk with my husband, handed us one of your mailers for your, um, thing. I believe your children went to Lakeview Elementary, as did, uh, Dr. Whitaker. I could be mistaken. But my husband seems to be pretty familiar with a lot of people who sit on here because he's been a part of the neighborhood far longer than us. And so, that same day when you handed me that mailer, by the time I made it down to my house to finish my walk, there was a mailer on my door too. And so, um, yeah, I'm just exercising my civic, uh, duty and responsibility today on behalf of my children. I have three of them.
I, I, I wasn't there.
Oh, go ahead.
And, and I encourage you to continue to do that regarding any issue that you may have. Um, to go also with that, in the Cavalier Manor community, Greenwood is a big issue as well.
Oh, yes. Capital of our.
I've, I've, yeah, I've been getting a lot of complaints about Greenwood and there's been a lot of accidents. I've seen a lot of accidents myself on Greenwood. So, I think that's something that we should, um, look at as well. Oh, and, and I also forgot about a, a, another shooting that was on Greenwood last week, um, by the rec center. So many in this city and so little response, just so much. But I think that it, it's probably some more spaces in Cavalier Manor as well that maybe need to be looked at. I'm, I don't stay out Cavalier Manor, but some of our council members do. But I've heard about the, the, the part that you're talking about, but also, like I said, I wanted to add Greenwood because that, it's like an accident twice a week on Greenwood, specifically by Viking and Greenwood.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody then, Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. My, my question is to the city manager and perhaps it's something you, you can get back with council on, but, uh, what impact, uh, if indeed the traffic division has been reorganized or changed in some fashion? Because in, I know in driving around the city, uh, particularly, uh, different areas, West Norfolk Bridge is like running the Daytona 500 in the morning and the evening. And I really don't see many people pulled over for speeding or I see a lot of people running red lights and, uh, what have you. Perhaps, uh, you can brief council at our, uh, work session coming up, uh, on what, uh, what's going on with, uh, that piece. I know shootings and stuff like that's much higher priority. But, uh, as, as our speaker just pointed out, uh, speeding and running stop signs and red lights is, can be just as deadly. So...
I can definitely provide a report back on the.
If my colleagues are in agreement, uh, have that, uh, take place at a public, uh, work session.
Absolutely. And Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Adams, thank you for coming and exercising your right to speak before council. We hope that this will not be the last time that you'll have an issue, um, because you spoke passionately and you gave us some good insight. I am a resident of Crystal Lake as well.
Yeah, my house.
And I like to ride my bike as well. And my husband said he's not gonna get out there and ride with me because he's seen the kind of traffic that, that hits those streets. And, you know, I'm sorry that, that happened to your daughter. But, um, I too would like to see the city manager because, you know, some other communities are always considered bike-friendly communities. But, you know, a lot of times our communities that are affluent or African-American communities are not considered bike-friendly communities. Um, there's no bike trails. There's no signs. There's, you know, not a lot of, you know, um, activity to show that, you know, we like to spend time outdoors, you know, riding our bikes as well. So, um, you know, if that's something that we could be, you know, uh, considered, um, for, you know, at least a bike lane or some kind of traffic, um, signal or not a signal, a sign, um, just like you, you requested. So, I applaud you for being an advocate for yourself and for your children, your family. And, um, I'd like to hear more from you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just like I previously stated, speed bumps is, is a small thing that we can do. Cause I, you know, I am sorry to hear this story about your, uh, daughter. And, um, you know, that's just a, a start of us, of, of us slowing down these speeders in these different communities. communities. Um, you know, I, I know Councilman Moody says something about the interstate or not, but the thing is, you know, this small thing of putting speed bumps in these neighborhoods can really, you know, create this community for our kids that we're looking for. Like you said, your kid can't even go outside and play in front of the yard. Can't, you can't even jog down the street without, you know, probably facing the cars because you don't want no cars to just run up on your backside. Okay? So, um, I don't, I, I know I said this before, I don't know what study we gotta do or what we gotta bring back, but I felt like it fell on deaf ears at first and she had to come up here and say something about her child getting hit, you know? And I, you know, and I really think it fell on deaf ears the first time. Um, it's a serious issue. I think we need to look at all communities, you know? And, um, and, and it's something we need to do immediately. It really is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I go?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, also, another street in Cavalier Manor, Beach, uh, Bunch Boulevard and Beach Del Row, that's another one that I heard about as well.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Madam Clerk? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Good to see you, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. I'm here as a citizen of the city of Portsmouth. I want to read something to you all. I don't know if all y'all are aware of this, but all, August the third, twenty twenty-one, we had a national night out and it's Civic League of Craddock and Wilson Ward Gospel, We United. The article reads, "Unity in Portsmouth. The members of Craddock Civic League and the Wilson Ward Gospel Civic League combined efforts recently to celebrate National Night Out. For senior citizens who grew up in Portsmouth, this collaboration was significant and marked a refreshing way of thinking about community, race, and unity. Thanks to the dynamic leadership of Bracy Parr of Craddock and Elvira Johnson-Williams and Wilson Ward Gospel, the evening was well-planned and successful. Due to the weather, attendance was down just slightly. Holding the event on the historic grounds of the Olympian Sports Club formerly known as Key Road School, which is a historical building, added to the celebratory atmosphere. Kudos to all who helped make this year's National Night Out a wonderful, though soggy, experience. Representatives from city government, fire, police, and sheriff assure that these two civic leagues will work together on other projects to benefit our city. We encourage other civic, Portsmouth Civic Leagues to join us. Maurice Connor Taylor, Secretary, Wilson Ward Gospel Civic League." I read that because this city is lacking unity, in my personal opinion. So, as all of you that are elected officials in this city, I believe that with that comes a responsibility to work together towards making our city better, to not only be professional, but to be respectful to us, the citizens, and to each other on council. I look at city council meetings to the point that I just got tired of looking at the craziness. It hurts me to look at it because I see the level of disrespect that is shown to one another. As a citizen in this, in this city, it's shameful that I could go out and unfortunately or fortunately, everybody knows my name and they wanted to know why our city officials just can't seem to get along. I don't know the answer. God knows I don't. But the city clerk reads a set of rules before any non-agenda speaker come up here. And we have to adhere to those rules. Most of the time, we are adults giving rules, which is not a problem. But once you give those rules out to us, non-agenda speakers, I suggest strongly that you apply your rules to yourselves as well, as well. Coming up here to this podium can be kind of taxing. I'm nervous, always. Sometimes I look around, I used to come up here right regularly, and I started noticing things. And I'm glad to say tonight I don't even see that happening. And what was happening? A person would come up here and talk to you and you got to be down there on a piece of paper, you got to be playing with the computer, but you don't give your people the respect that they deserve when they come to this podium. Please, let's do better. Tonight, I applaud you. At least it looks like I got your attention. I hope and I pray that we as members of this city in Portsmouth, we can stop being the laughingstock of the nation and be a better community for the people that you are here to work for, not to showcase who you are, not to buff up your muscles and try to be better than the next one or think you're better than the next one. Do the job that you were elected to do and serve us, the people of this city of Portsmouth. And I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Catherine Howell. Oh, I'm sorry. Just before, I'm sorry, excuse me. Ms. Judy Harris, is she still here?
Ms. Harris?
Ms. Howell, you'll be right after her. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Harris. Yes, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Okeydoke. Um, my name is Judy Harris. I live at One Harbor Court in Portsmouth. I've only been here five years. Not good, not good. Um, I am here to talk about the parking deck across from Harbor Tower Apartments. Horrendous. I am afraid to park in my parking deck. I have a designated parking space, my tenants and I, um, one of the tenants, David Stevenson, is here with me tonight and two other tenants. And we spoke with several tenants about this issue and it's just horrible. I have a two thousand eighteen Nissan Rogue. I thought it was safe. I looked up the cars that they're stealing catalytic converters from. Mine was safe supposedly, but they tried. So that was a five hundred dollar deductible and an insurance, you know, um, and to put it in through insurance. My car was broken into on the third level and then I asked management at my building to move me and they did. And I was broken into twice again. They just stole my laundry and clothes. I guess they needed it. Um, no damage to my car on the outside, but still, knowing someone broke into my car is very upsetting. The first two years I lived in Harbor Tower, I was happy. I was like, oh, Portsmouth is wonderful. I love it here. Now I'm like, oh my God, I can't even walk to Seven-Eleven. So I would like to know from city council, what can you do? I want to say, you should, but I want to say, what can you do to help us? Like, we shouldn't have to park on the street. I literally moved my car at about five o'clock, tried to find a parking space at a meter so I know I won't get, you know, a ticket at night, and then get up at eight o'clock in the morning, move my car again. I won't even park in my parking space during the day. I park somewhere in visitor where I can see my car, run from my apartment down, check she's okay, you know? I don't want to have to do that. I feel that the city should be able to install some cameras in that parking deck. I mean, Harbor Tower pays you a fee monthly for that parking deck, okay? For our designated spaces, the numbers go up to like five hundred. I know we don't use them all, but that cost gets passed on to me as a tenant. So I'm asking you, like, I honestly don't know how long I'm gonna stay in Portsmouth because I am afraid. I used to walk to Walmart, then when my car got broken into, I was doing a police report and he was like, oh, no, no, you should not walk to Walmart. I'm like, why? I'm from New York. I'm used to walking. It's okay. He's like, no, 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 do not walk. And then, yeah, somebody tried to like, I guess mug me as I was walking to Walmart because she was like, can you help me? By some truck stop. She wanted me to help her with her suitcase and I was like, hmm. My mom, God rest her soul, she was like, uh, uh, you know? So I didn't help, but I don't want to feel unsafe. But today, I'm here. I know Portsmouth, the, the, um, crime rate has gone up. I read sixty-eight crimes for every thousand people. And in the last two years, it has gone up a shocking two hundred twenty-two percent. That's crazy, okay? I, I, I didn't even feel unsafe when I lived in New York. I shouldn't, I came here to feel, to start over after divorce and just have a better life. Not so much, so I just want to say, please help us at Harbor Tower. Our management is saying, you have to do something. We think they should be fighting for us, to you, talking to you, seeing if they can work together with you on this, but everybody passes the buck. So I'm hoping, Mayor Glover, that the buck stops with you. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Madam City Manager, um, some of the concerns that she just indicated, could you please have someone get with her before she leaves to gather more information so that we can work on perhaps an appropriate response? Madam, Madam Clerk, our next speaker, please. Good evening, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Good evening. So I actually just moved into Cavalier Manor and Taft Drive is another one that's used as a drag strip. Um, just this weekend, I actually called Portsmouth Police Department to come out because a car was driving about fifty-five miles an hour down the street. And it's at the back of Cavalier Manor. Fifty-five miles per hour. My kids can't play outside either. There are four-way stops in, in, all through Cavalier Manor that has a yield sign. Who's gonna, if it's a, if it's a four-way cross, who, who, people don't, people don't yield. There's potholes everywhere. The flooding is abysmal, but the speeding is absolutely awful. But what I really wanted to talk about was the shooting that happened yesterday over on Ivy and Thorn. So Ivy and Thorn is less than a quarter of a mile away from Victory Elementary School where my children attend school. My questions are, uh, what is the distance requirement listed in order to put a school into lockdown? Because when I saw the alert on Nextdoor and I called Victory Elementary School, the sheriff's deputies that were at the school didn't even know that there was a shooter less than a quarter of a mile away from our, from my children's school. Nobody knew what was going on. The other thing is, who, who makes the call on the distance for lockdown procedure? I am an alumni of Virginia Tech and I was there during the shooting and I lost friends and several other of my friends are, were shot and survived. So I've experienced this and yesterday I got brought back into that because I didn't know if my kids were safe at school and I didn't, I didn't know what the process was and it didn't seem like anybody, anybody else knew either. And when I contacted the police department, they wouldn't even tell me whether or not my, the school was on lockdown. And I would like to know why that is. Because I'm a parent and I have children in school and I should know whether it's on lockdown or not. The other questions I have is, um, I guess more transparency. How many shootings have we had in Portsmouth this year? This month? This week? And I know that declaring a state of emergency is not at the city council's level, but I would like to know how many more of our children are gonna have to die before we can declare a state of emergency?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, our next speaker? Good evening, sir.
How you doing? Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. I didn't know you did this softball league. It was amazing. This summer, we had a ball. We had a blast. I've been gone for a while. Thank you. Hope to bring it back next year. There was something that was good for the, really, um, one thing else I want to address is ask why the kids out there zone, the kids out there is only have three different school zones. One community, three different schools. That's, that was something that was brought to my attention by them, which we know a lot of times it deals with S O Ls, stolen living, different things like that. Why are one neighborhood, three different schools for elementary school for the kids? And also, I want to bring to the attention and address the same thing you just wanted to say. It becomes disgusting and discouraging for the people on council to want the city to be in a sense of community, but yet the frustration and the disrespect and the disregards that we see as people who are paying. Tonight, I witnessed, like you said, people talking, the way you look, the different things like that. Things are done, as you say, in the city by protocol. We talk about procedure, we talk about different things. And it's disgusting to continue to see leadership people not taking protocol, taking proper steps and measures, but yet you're asking citizens to do the exact same thing. To be in a position to be able to be of influence or to dictate how things are going starts with leadership first and it trickles down to the people down here. And when it gets to the point that it becomes so disgusting and so frustrating with the citizens, a lot of backlash comes. As we talk about the shootings, I didn't know that, but for me to get a call and know that it was a shooting on Taft yesterday that I got there and they're not notified, we have a problem with the city. We have a problem. Why did I get a phone call? But yet, like she said, nobody's been contacted. We think, um, the different procedures and protocols need to do. The shooting yesterday out South Side was dear and dear to me. That was my little cousin, the two-year-old that was in the car that was murdered. And when we get out there and talk, they say that, the police told me that the cameras don't work. Why aren't the cameras working? To me, it let me know why a lot of the shootings are probably going on. They know their cameras don't work. So if we're in a city that they know that the cameras don't work, what are they gonna do? We got cameras in the bank to make sure people don't continue to go in the bank and rob the bank, but we don't have cameras in these communities that's impoverished, but yet crime continues to strike. We, I just feel as though we need to get together or people need to get together to address these concern, address these issues, because when these issues come to me, I'm gonna come speak on them. That's one thing they don't want to do. I'm gonna continue to be a voice for the people of my city because, like I always say and I will continue to say, I'll continue to be a little bit like a liability, but understand that I'm an asset. And unless we start to utilize these things to get together and work, as we say, community is communication and unity. There's a lot of talking over here and uniting over here and it's not being put together to be community, to make things work together. There's a lot of cliques and forms and this and that, and it's no different than gangs out there in society. When we look up here as a clique, I'm here, I'm here there. It's no different than gang, it's no different than territory, it's no different than nothing. We need to just look at everybody as one race, which is the human race, one cause, which is to make a safer, better community for our kids and places that we can live in. I live in forty thirty-five storeway lane in church. I don't have a lot of problems, but yet my family lives in these impoverished communities which continue to call me and I will continue to fight for them as long as I got breath in me. And I'm asking for help if y'all get together to help me, help the community. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Our final speaker is Mr. Elliot Cohen.
Good evening, Elliot Cohen.
Good evening, sir. You have five minutes.
Yes. Uh, thirty-six thirteen Point Elizabeth Drive. I'm in Chesapeake. I've owned a piece of property in Portsmouth for thirty-five years, a shopping center called City Line Plaza. I'm on High Street. I'm the last piece of property in Portsmouth. I brought my tax check, seven thousand dollars. That's thirty thousand dollars a year I pay for my taxes. I haven't missed one payment in thirty-some-odd years, but when I call the city to get something done, I don't get answers. I came here six years ago and to this day, nothing's been done about the problems that I have on the six thousand block of High Street. Uh, just recently, the, uh, picture you have in front of you is my piece of property. It was an old Shoney's building and since then, you may know, um... It was an old Shoney's building, and since then, you may know Hawaiian barbecue is in the shopping center. It's been very successful. When I called, if you go to the second page, this is what the shopping center looked like six years ago. The date's up on top, April 2016. And I was in here complaining about the entranceway into Portsmouth from Chesapeake, which goes from Western Branch. It just hasn't been maintained or taken care of. I spoke to a Mr. Bright about it, they were talking about a bike path back then, and he said that he would look into it. He met me at the property, never got back to me about it. One of my major concerns, if you go to the next page, that's in 2017. Again, it hasn't been maintained. In 2019, a couple of months ago, same picture, just growth, nobody maintaining that side of the road. Here's a recent picture that I just took in September. Again, it's, nobody's doing anything, no matter how many times you call or ask. Here's the important part. This is me standing in a six-foot ditch on the side of the road that I complained about, that some kid could be walking down, fall in the ditch, and nobody would know he would be in there. And I asked that ditch to be filled, and at the time, we said, well, you can do it when the bike path gets done, and maybe co-mingle the state funds to get this taken care of. Nothing's been done. The next picture is the bike path that used to be an old railroad track. That picture is from 2017. The following picture is what Chesapeake just completed. They put in a bike path, but they stopped at the Portsmouth City Line, which is right at my shopping center. So you have the bike path completed by Chesapeake, but Portsmouth hasn't done anything in the six years that they've been discussing it. The picture with the water with the house, the flooding is so bad that this actually happened, and I think there's a date on it, in 8/18. That has not been corrected. And the reason I, this is around the corner, behind my shopping center, but the water has not been maintained, and it doesn't drain. And again, nobody wants to do anything about it. These are people that are getting flooded out of their house, and nothing gets done. Something minor. Here's a tree that the city planted 30 years ago. I asked them not to plant the tree because it blocks the stores that pay rent, and they put up signs, but they wanted to beautify the front door of the entrance into Portsmouth. Well, now the tree has grown so large, if you look at the following picture, it's blocking the light to keep my parking lot secure. I haven't been able to get this, the city, they came out with this new system where you can go online and get a complaint taken care of. Well, somebody came out the next day, surprised me, looked at the tree, said, oh, I don't know if that's on city property, I'll get back to you. Never heard from them again. My last final thing is Starbucks gets built, they put in a curb, and the curb is so tight that the trucks run over the curb and broke the brand-new curb. I called and said they broke it, they fixed it, and it's broke again within a week. Who's supposed to monitor that? You drive down the same road with Starbucks, there's a piece of foam from a couch sitting on the road, nobody picks it up. It's been there all week, it's there right now, on the way home, go by. Nobody's even picking up the trash off the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes?
I just need somebody to contact me and...
Sir, if you would just hold on for a few minutes after we adjourn, we'll have someone to get your information and respond to you appropriately, okay, Mr. Cohen?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
And that's what I was gonna say. Just this time, can we make sure that we address those issues that he's having, because it sounds like it's been something very ongoing.
Thank you, sir. And Councilmember Moody, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to staff, to the city manager. At this meeting and just about every meeting, we have citizens, speakers that have things they want us to get back with them on. Previously, we had a city ombudsman that would come back at the following meeting and report back, not only to council, but to the public that's viewing this meeting. They see us up here, and they hear all these questions, and we sit here stoically because obviously we're not gonna have the answers readily at that time. And they think, well, gee, these people, these bums on the log are sitting up here, and they're not responding at all, and nobody got back to that poor Mr. and Mrs. citizen. So maybe we need to know what the system is now on getting feedback to them, and when I say to them, to us, to the public. It's kind of a triangle situation. If you could, if my colleagues are in agreement that at the next public work session, we get back and let us know how that's gonna work going forward.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. So not seeing any other business for our consideration, this meeting for tonight is adjourned. Have a good evening.